You guys had a chance to look at previous minutes from last month's meeting? Any corrections or additions to that? If not, we'll take your motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Lauren, second. Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Tonight's agenda, any additions to that? If not, we'll take your motion to approve that.
Oh, Larry, second?
Second.
Oh, wait on, oh, sorry, no, you're fine, thank you though.
Aye.
Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll just move right to Grant then. We all know Jeff, or sorry, Joe Bardell resigned last month and is down south. So we'll just take the oath of office to get Grant Baker has been willing to accept this position. I don't know why, but thank you. We'll just go through, just repeat after me on this. I, Grant Baker of Gackel, North Dakota.
I, Grant Baker of Gackel, North Dakota.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Councilman.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Councilman.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Okay, and we'll just have you sign.
Well, don't have him sign it, he's supposed to sign at the date and at the event.
Okay. Thank you for accepting the position for, how long is that term?
Till this June and then he'll run against, he'll run for it.
Perfect, okay, thanks for doing that for us. Okay, and then we'll move right into Otter Tail.
And last month we even talked about the franchise agreement and renewing it. Would you guys have any other questions about the agreement?
I, nothing's been raised as far as I know, you guys have any?
No. I just have one question, so with it there, we give, will you guys do an ordinance number? The previous ordinance number was 2024, do you guys want to use the same one? Or do you need to make a new one ordinance number? Do you know?
I was asking earlier.
Yeah, I think most people just use the same one, I mean unless. No, yeah, you wouldn't have to change it unless you guys wanted to, that part's up to you, how you guys want.
No, I say we keep the same.
And do you publish your ordinances? Okay, so once everything aside and finalized, Otter Tail will pay for publishing as well. Is that like locally or who does that?
We do it locally.
Locally, okay, so once it's time, we'll just touch base about that. So then this month, basically, just approving that you guys want to continue with the franchise and then all need signatures from you on three documents. And then I'll take all three back with me, we send them to Fergus Falls, that way we can get a fine document.
Do you have the ordinance, what was the old ordinance?
Yep, I have the old ordinance and that number was 2024.
Okay, can I get a copy of that?
Yes, I can send that too. All I needed from you guys for tonight, if there are no other questions.
You have a second motion?
Do me.
Yeah, I was in the main, yeah, for the second reading, sorry.
And what was the, I better grab that ordinance number then soon.
So the ordinance number that you had last time was 2024.
Take a motion to approve ordinance number 2024. So move.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and then, once they have the copy of the minutes, then we can send it to.
Okay, I'm sending it in December and, and.
And then, yes, and then I can email you a copy of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys, have a good evening.
All right, we'll move right into reports, city maintenance, what do you got for us?
I did order that lift station pump. Would imagine it'd be here any day now, would think. Just to catch Grant up on that, I guess we, we don't have a backup pump for our lift station, there's two pumps down there. So this last summer, one went out and we were down to one pump, so if that pump went out, we would have been just kind of pumping it out with a two-inch pump. So that's kind of where we're at here. Got stopped by Dave Revinius, he don't want me to push any more snow in that RV lot every month. So that's gonna have to be, it's gonna be more pushing snow, I guess, because we're gonna have to push it all to the south, put it in that ditch down there. We're gonna have to keep that open as wide as we can, because that blows in so bad, so fast up there, that's why I kept pushing it back into that RV lot.
You're talking down, that's your property, don't we?
That's our road there, yeah.
Oh, to the south, I'm sorry. Okay.
Meters, we got ninety-three or ninety-four meters in? Sherry, did you ever get that, how much was left in that account?
How much money was left in that account?
No, I have to upload for it, because those last meters should have taken us out a while.
We've been putting down fire hydrant markers, a lot of them didn't have markers, so they all have markers now on them. I'm sure if you, probably never in around town, you see new ones on them.
Some are different than the other, they sent us one kind and then next, we ordered some more, we did more, and the next ones they sent were totally different, but they worked, they all worked.
Okay.
And then we got the new city pickup that Miller Honey donated. Larry did a rough estimate on what a hood, headlights, grill assembly would cost, it was about eight hundred bucks. I don't know if you want to touch more on that?
Well, we just called Aberdeen Wrecking Yard and this is huge. We tried and see if we can get a black one, the hood, so we wouldn't have to paint it, but he didn't have any on hand, he was gonna get them from another wrecking yard, so. The headlights are new, because, well, like you can see what the ones are in there, they're getting so cloudy, because any used ones he had were all cloudy and also. But the girls, you know, everything's gonna be in good shape, so. If we can't find a black hood, then we're gonna have to repaint it.
I say go orange.
Oh, that'd be swag and orange. The doors would have to get painted orange too.
There you go. Well, thanks guys for doing that, that's awesome, eight hundred bucks and good, that's.
Good, it's got a lot of power. It's good and, well, we're gonna have to go up our northwest tire, because the insides of the tires are starting to wear out.
Yeah, you want to look at that front end and see if there's any obvious things, and then otherwise we'll have to, because it is wearing out the inside tires.
Wow, we might as well talk about the insurance on that, what they want to do.
Oh, sure. It was valued at around eight thousand, so if you guys want to either do liability on that, it's a hundred and twenty-one dollars a year, or if you want full coverage with five hundred comprehensive and collision, it's two eighty-four a year.
Well, if we're gonna fix it up, maybe we should put, you know, full coverage on it.
So it's another hundred and forty, sixty dollars a month?
A year.
A year, a hundred and, oh, that's not.
Especially if you fix it up, you know. Unless we just save Billy's bad driver and he did all that damage, you know.
I just put liability between you guys' heads, you're right.
So, yeah, we, she had called, this is a cheaper one for now, we can change it anytime.
She knows, I'm gonna call her after the meeting to let her know.
So you guys just think pay that little extra?
I would think so, at least for now, we can only change the line later.
Okay. That's all we need.
Probably got the two curb stops replaced, and talked about doing. During that two-hour power outage that we had, what was it, last week? The generator at the wellhouse was running, out at the lift station, that one was not running, so Lauren got a hold of Interstate Power. They came down today, and he really didn't fix much, Lauren. He unplugged some wires and he opened some of them out to make sure there's still connection, plugged them all back in and started. And then we ran it through the cycle a couple of times and it's been starting ever since, so.
I wonder why it lost its fuel?
He was thinking, like cracking his hoses.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, he said he's had that happen to him before.
Did you guys figure anything out, was he, I haven't been by the church down there, is that something we're gonna have to wait till spring then for that?
Yeah, that's gonna have to wait till spring.
That's probably more of a project than we realized, I suppose.
Getting back to the city pickup, do you want me to order any of that stuff or?
I thought you did.
No, I haven't ordered it, I'm looking. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted, I just wanted to be okay, I'll get, I'll get the stuff coming then.
I thought it was, yeah, you had ordered it.
Yeah, I had, yeah.
Perfect, okay. And you'll just let us know about, obviously if it needs alignment or whatever it needs to get the tires from wearing, I would say go ahead and do it, am I wrong on that? So we don't keep absolute wearing tires, so.
Right now we can rotate them and they'll, you know, we're not, the front aren't that bad, if we rotate them to the back, we'll be able to go and solidate, you know, get the alignment and stuff done.
And then the other thing Tom just brought up here was vehicles that haven't been moved yet, first snow removal. Is there anything that you need to do, talk to Andrew about it, or?
We're gonna read that second ordinance this afternoon and get that passed, then we'll put it in effect and then.
If something doesn't get done about it, it's just gonna keep happening, it's just same people all the time.
We'll get that covered.
We had a list before snow, in fact, it was given to me, and with that new ordinance coming in, and quite a few of them did move that I've seen, so before, without, but with this ordinance being read tonight and in effect, then I say we give that to Andrew or Kyle, whoever needs that, and move on from there. Okay, and make sure we get it right away, because we need two weeks' notice before we can find, tell we're doing that stuff. That's, that's the way it is, it's not a mess on that, but it's not that we move something, we get in trouble for it, so. Yeah, do you guys have a list then?
I guess I don't. Just up here, I mean, we know, we know it's usually all the time.
It's the same, I know.
Even when you verbally warn them, you know, while we're doing garbage and they'll be out there and say, hey, the snow's gonna be flying, you know, you might want to think about this stuff here, oh yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure that happens. Anything else, guys? Okay, Otter, what do we got?
I just want to know if we have anything in place for bounce checks. I know a lot of other people have to do, if you bounce a check, two, maybe three times, you go on a list and you can only do cash or a money order for a period of six months or a year before you, then you gotta pay it without, you know, one time and all that, before you can go back to writing checks. I'm having the same ones over and over that have bounced checks, and it's a pain in the ass to do paper.
Because of your books, is what you told me?
Yeah, books, you gotta, you've already deposited in here, this month here, I've got two of them, that means I gotta redo all my paperwork, back stuff back out, do this, do that. And it's, it's the same ones that are doing it, so I think, is there any way I can tell them cash or money order, money order only, because they've done it too many times?
How many do you have, about, quite a few?
Uh, two, three.
Is there a limit on it or what do you guys?
Yeah, is, is the same ones over and over again or is it?
It's the same ones, same ones.
Over and over?
Yeah, the one here, he just, we went to shut him off last month and then he went ahead and paid by check, so we didn't cut his water off and that one bounced again. So we just shut his water off and probably do it.
We need to probably just say something this time and just, or just let him know that next time we'll just, we'll just expect money order.
Okay, because I just want to know from you guys, and I can do that, just say, look, you've had Jiminy already, you need cash or money order?
That's what I would say.
Because the one next door is the next one. The one here, the one here next door will be the next one, because I just got money orders.
Just take money orders for, for a year, like you say, you give it a, you know, six months, something, but you have to pay on time for that period, time before you can go back on.
I know like electric companies and stuff do that. But it's just, it's, it gets to be too much, we got two of them again this month. And that's all I have.
Waters, well, for now, you'll be water sewer and leasing. What's that? Because we're not gonna switch that right now, we'll wait till after the election and buy.
We have those new people that just moved over on 107 Main. Do we go down, do you guys go down and mess with something with the sewer, they called here and wants the city maintenance to come, their sewer's backed up?
We flushed the mainline sewer today and it's, it's on their end, it's not, we had good flow all the way through there.
Oh, so you've already talked to them since saying, I wasn't sure if we did that or?
Their sewer's not working.
No, so our sewer's fine, the mainline's fine, it's between, it's from their house that it's backed up.
We had that problem and no one's owned it.
Well, nobody's been in that house for a long, long time.
We fixed it. That yellow house next to this side of Ramble.
Oh, okay. So the city did what they could and the rest is up to them. Okay, so yeah, Grant, you'll have water sewer and leasing, if there's any questions or anything, we'll just send them your way. Okay, and I haven't heard anything this month or had anyone. Streets, lighting and library.
Anybody seen, I drive around in the mornings, you know, pretty early.
There's the one down here on Front Street in Main.
Front Main?
Yeah, right by Dwight Lee's storage building.
Oh, okay.
That one's not on.
Okay, anywhere else, anybody seen anything?
I haven't seen any other either.
Um, that's the streets, good on those lights.
Larry, you guys all know about the Christmas lights, right? That the, what they told Dylan and I, that we had to count all the bulbs on all the Christmas decorations this year, and they're gonna be charging us electricity for those, you know.
Oh, okay, I was wondering, he stopped in Streeter, it was one.
He was, he was advertising the schedule for every year they budget in each area, and they just wanted to know if we were running incandescent or LEDs. He was just trying to figure a budget for the city.
Yeah.
But yeah.
We had to count every bulb on each one.
It was Steve Schultz called, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys had to count everything.
And you did? When you're at streets, what if, one down here, what do we have to do with that one down here with the manhole? Looks like it's gonna take.
On Heard Street?
Well, I took that manhole out pushing snow, so.
You took out the manhole pushing snow? Oh, okay.
That was the one I was skipping up.
So what was, yeah, I did see that manhole, what was that?
I had it with the. I figured that. You're not any taller.
Did you see a bump on his head?
Drenched you out. Oh, no, I didn't stop the trailer or nothing.
All right, Larry, you got anything? Lauren?
Nope.
Okay, old business, Otter Tail, we did that. We'll go over franchise for twenty years, that's part of the employee evaluation, that's done. Salary negotiation, water meter reader, got that figured out. We'll move on to new business, we swore in Grant Baker. Remind residents of rate increase, so I thought it was in June?
July.
July, I'm sorry. Southeast Water District came and they're raising their rates by twenty-five cents, so we had to raise our rates by twenty-five cents, and that's starting January one. So if anyone comes to anybody about why their water bill's up a little bit.
Did you look, Sherry, what are we charging now?
Um, I don't know right offhand, I've got it, I gotta have to get my book, my cheat sheet book, to look in to see how I get tonight, what my figures are.
Either way, that's, if you guys get a question about anything, it's up twenty-five cents per thousand gallons, so I can't imagine it's gonna be crazy for anyone, but. And then every year we give to that Santa Claus Day in Streeter, because there's a ton of Gackel kids that go over and do that. We've been doing five hundred dollars over there, are you guys okay with that? Keep that going, I think it's a great thing that they get kids from everywhere, it's.
My kids went over there all them years, you know, but everybody's kids.
Yeah, so.
I'm agreeing for five hundred.
Five hundred, we'll stick with that? Okay?
I remember you had Jeff said yes and.
We'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Miller Honey Truck Insurance, that we just got through. Second reading for snow removal. We added to ordinance 3.0214. Street cleaning and snow removal, after twenty-four hours of snow removal, any vehicle not moved for maintenance to clean roads will be ticketed or towed. Yeah, okay, just a second. Do we need a motion to approve that again or just?
Second one.
Okay.
I'll make that motion this time.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think that's what we needed for the past two years, we've had a lot of controversy.
Yo, Andrew. And I know we're struck for years.
Okay, and then also, whoopsack. Troy and Debbie Zilmer, they are in City Limits. They have written a letter about, and you guys said you felt some potholes, I think we're gonna have to address more and get some gravel along that old road that goes past their place and all the way out. I've heard that we can, if we want to do it this way, when we gravel it, then we can have the county maintain it like they do our other two strips around town, if you guys are in favor of that?
We're gonna have to, we don't have any other way of doing that, do we?
That was great, or?
Your dog Mel will goes past their house and by the, by the.
From off pavement to all the way back around.
And then that section from.
And you had said that there's big rocks pulling out, so I'm assuming we better address the gravel and get that in the spring and get that done the whole way back?
Do you want, are they gonna do the gravel or did you want county to do it?
I say the county just does it and maintain it myself.
Let him do it.
That's my opinion.
I agree, yeah. Address this spring, obviously, let's get through the winter.
And then we need to put that on the snow removal route also regularly, things, it's City Limits, so that's, and I was looking at that earlier and that goes right back to past year's shop there, so. I guess get with, I don't know where to push the snow, once you get back to that point, if it's gonna be.
You guys probably know more than I do about out there, sorry.
That's basically what I do, is I've just been moving it with Dakota Valley stuff, and just, yeah, try and snow blow everything to the south or lay into the south kind of however.
We're getting cleaned up pretty good back there.
So are you, are you doing the one where his house is too or just where Deb's is?
We're gonna have to do that, everything out there minus the state, I assume, right?
I just take it up to Dakota Valley and then regular.
It's gonna have to be, there's, I mean, to be fair, all people.
You're accessing those dumpsters? Are you accessing those dumpsters clear over there or no? You got dumpsters?
There's two dumpsters, there's one at their place and one at Zilmer's.
We're obligated to keep that, you know.
You prefer to do your own as far as which?
Makes no difference to me, I've been cleaning it since forever, so, yeah, and however, wherever, makes no difference.
I mean, if it gets to be too much, you know, if we get just dumped on, we just give one of those calls, we can kind of clean it up.
Yeah, if it's something to where it's, you know, something that I can't handle with the Bobcat, then sure, you know, so if you got backup, that's fine with me, you know, but I'm content to continue to clean everything.
You got to clean last year, I mean.
Well, I would just make a point to make sure both of those get done, so that we don't repair all the residents out there, I guess. I don't know, is that, yeah, so, the horse rivers and all that, yeah, so just wash that out on the road, and obviously the driveways are up to go as well, but.
Whatever keeps everybody happy. Yeah, and then, because I, like, if you're continuing going and then, I guess, with this stuff here, I've just been pushing everything to the south, and if you need like just a route to like push to, like I call this stuff, I move over here into the end of our fence and stuff, if you need just a place to keep going, sure, and then wheel round and then come back, and however you like it in there. To get into the Dakota Valley stuff, we're gonna have to try pretty hard to screw up, so.
All right, anything else on that, guys? And then the last thing I got on here is, I was approached, and it's early in the season, and I don't want to piss you guys off or anything, but I've been approached by quite a few people this last snow removal, about snow getting pushed into their driveways without any snow up front and the piles and the, so what, only thing I could tell them is we should, only thing I could think of, if you guys got better ideas, please let me know, was getting a gate system for the side of the plow to try and keep it out of some of these driveways. I don't know what you guys' thought is or what you want to address, you can yell at me or whatever, but it was quite a few people this time, so I just want to get this nipped in the bud before we really start getting the snowfall here. I don't know what you guys' thought on.
I always liked the idea of having a gate system, so you guys going up down Main Street wouldn't have to windrow it, you know, you could actually push it with the gates, would that be handy, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it would be handy, but this last storm, I mean, there was times where it was, there was snow thirty feet on one side of the road and there was nothing on the other side of the road. So, I mean, how do you, you know, we go up and we go back down, I mean, we're not purposely putting this snow in people's driveways.
Well, that's, I, and I understand, I'm just saying, I think.
And I don't know that it's actually so much as a monitor driveways rather than just blocking off the edge of the driveways.
Well, one person came up that I got my ass chewed for.
Said it was in the driveway.
It was like four feet, five feet in, like it was, they said you came speeding by there and threw it in there, and I'm not saying it's intentional, I'm just telling you what I get. So I think with a gate system, I think that's gonna help alleviate some of that. Myself, or is that not?
So with the gate system, are we gonna put it up and down every time we go by a driveway then?
Yep, it's gonna slow us down.
Did you ever check into a gate?
I'd, I'd be checking into one, I have a Butler checking into.
Oh, gates.
They haven't gotten back to you.
I think the more you got used to the end, it might be a little easier, you know, than the first time, you know, but. It might work.
I don't, what's the, what do you feel about it?
I think we should try it, but I don't know, I've heard already with gates, it doesn't work very well.
Oh, really?
Because what happens, when you close that gate, it's gonna grip it to the blade, and pretty soon it doesn't slide off and you're just dead pushing. I guess in the larger towns, that's one of the problems they have.
And they don't even, a lot of times they don't use the gates. It's just the homeowner's responsibility to clean that ridge out of this driveway. But I think we should try it.
And I think maybe it's more gonna be these three, four, two, three, four inch deals when you guys come, you know, and the wind was obviously blowing it. Like you got one corner that was two, three feet tall, the next, nothing. I mean, I get that. Think it's something, I mean, at least we made an attempt to try.
Right. Even if we start with, that might sound funny, but, uh, those gates are expensive. Um, maybe just start with one on the, you know, on the right-handed side. You know, that one drop, you know, thirty feet. And then, then if you really like it and it, you know, works this pushing the Main Street, then we can get you the other one too, but. Let's start with the right-hand side first. Get us a quote on it.
Okay. I'll call home tomorrow and see where is that, right?
Might help. But like you say, we're doing what we can do.
Right.
And it, just out of curiosity, is this an incident where somebody has like two and a half feet of snow already drifted in their driveway? And six inches got thrown on it?
Well, you know, this last snowfall, nobody had that much.
It was a couple of them where there was, they already had it cleaned out and there was nothing in front and then it got pushed up and they had to hire it done again. There's one, one, two, I should say two of the instances. And I'm not, don't get me wrong here, guys, I'm not trying to start this.
We're trying to, yeah, brainstorming this problem.
It was quite a few people that came up to me and stopped me or called me, so I'm just, I need to address it. And I think that's a place to start, I guess. I don't know if that's, or if there's anyone else with some other opinions or ideas. We're open for it. I'm not.
Yeah, I don't know if it's gonna work that good, but I think we should make an effort to try to get one and try it.
Yeah.
But I'm afraid. And you're right, I need to try to open and close that gate on every driveway. You're probably gonna run into trouble because once you close it, that snow can't slide across the mow board. And it's gonna bridge it. And then when you pass the driveway, now you're starting to just go. Because you blocked off the path of travel.
There's gonna be a lot more snow pile up on the side of some stuff, yeah.
It's because when you lift that, once you lift that gate that big.
It's gotta go somewhere, right?
Yeah.
We can try it.
But I think we should try it.
Yeah.
I guess the luxury of us having a payload or two is instead of a blader is you can just push it over into there and start over again. I mean, I know it's gonna take some more time, but, I mean, if it's, make the residents happy, I think it's worth looking into or trying. That's my opinion, but.
There's gonna be storms you can't, you know.
And I, yeah.
We, we've had people.
But if it's not.
Say the same thing to us about it. Usually what it is, it's not before they've ever done their driveway, it's once their driveway is done. You know, if Willie goes out and does a bunch of driveways before we get to that street. And then we come by and they get that hump out in front, that's what they get upset about.
Which, I mean, I understand that. I just, but maybe if we can alleviate that, click of a button, I guess, it's worth trying, yes, but.
And it might be just cleaning the roads and maybe that last thing you do too is just going, you know, as you go to, I don't know. Don't wanna slow you down, but.
I don't know. Some of them were, where they moved their vehicles off the road too, you know, after we went by and then today we went out and we pushed off road. I mean, when it's sitting right by the driveways, you know, I don't wanna get Tom in trouble for moving the snow out of somebody's driveway. You know?
Well, if you can stop it when we get there and then pass it, I mean, I get it, it's gotta go somewhere, but. Just think it's worth it.
Yeah, I'll look into it, see what it costs. I'll just see what it costs for two. At least we know.
So, I don't know. It's a promise now, so should we have them order the right one? I don't, I'm assuming there's a right and a left or how does that work?
Yeah.
Just give us a call and.
Yeah, let, let, let them know how much it costs and if it's, you know, five thousand bucks.
We might not have until January's meeting to, we're gonna have a bunch of snow by then, so I think we should.
Get them coming if there's any sticker shopping on them.
What are you guys thinking for an amount as far as sticker shopping? Anything over five, give us a call? Is that what you guys are thinking?
Well, I think we'll probably need another spool on that payload over two.
I don't know if that's something they can do down here or if that's something we're gonna take the payload up there to do. I don't know. That might be just adding switches.
How many functions is that one on it?
There's a couple of functions we're not using.
There's only.
We do, yeah. On the joystick?
Yeah.
There is an idiot we're not using, not with the blade.
Oh, yeah, that one's left, right, runs a blade.
Right. And the trigger is for the differential lock. The only other thing would be to put two switches, you know, on the side where the parking brake would be, would be up and down.
Well, that doesn't, there's a fourth on that though. It doesn't, so.
Then you almost gonna have to stop the.
We'll see what they say.
Yeah, I think that's all.
Okay. Well, anything else on that, guys?
No, I'm just glad it's been done.
Okay, uh, you guys have a chance to look at bills from last month?
And like I said, I'll notice quite a few. There's about six or seven of them, eight of them that belong from last month. So last, last month we had, our bills were hardly nothing compared to what we brought in. More, yeah. And I think it's because it was Thanksgiving. They didn't hit here till into the December.
Sure.
Okay, any questions on any of them, guys? If not, we'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
Lauren, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
You guys have a meeting I put for January eighth? Technically it would be January first, but I get surgery on the twenty-seventh, so I'm letting me give myself that week two so I can be here on the eighth.
I don't think January first is a good idea then. For obvious reasons.
But that way it would give me my week and a half and I'll be back up on my family over the weekend.
I mean, mimosas might be had that morning and probably would do the shit.
Whatever you think so.
Just look out for you, Larry. You're welcome. All right, so as of now, January eighth, make words for everyone. All right, we'll take a motion to adjourned.
I'll move.
Grant, you gotta get in a second now. I shut you off earlier, sorry. All in favor?
You're not going over.
It'll be seven thirty-eight.